Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association, fighting for quality education in the greater Eureka area. Find out more at ETA-CTA.org.
Sorry, reconvening the open session. And report out for the closed session.
On item E6, there was no action to report.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to God, to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. For nations under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions to the agenda? Information, student reports. Seeing no student reports, superintendent.
Good evening, welcome everybody. Am I on? There we go. I'm happy to report out, visited at least each one of the campuses since our last meeting. Had a good time seeing the instruction that's going on in our campuses and continue to be pleasantly surprised by the level of instruction that we have going on in this district. And we have some fantastic teachers out there and have really enjoyed that. We had Zane back to school night, enjoyed that. We had Eureka High School back to school night, enjoyed that as well. And then we also had, not we, I had a meeting with each one of our feeder principals now. So I've met with Tom McMahon from Freshwater, Barbie McMahon from Garfield, Julie Osborne from Cutton, and also Paul Meyer from South Bay Elementary School District. Had conversations with them about how can Eureka City Schools help them out? How can we establish a relationship between the two school districts? In those individual meetings and what's been beneficial for them in the past and what hasn't worked for them. Really enjoyed sitting down, meeting with them and getting to know them a little bit better and learning about the different school districts. One other thing that I wanted to report on too, it was requested at the last board meeting about, some direction was given to us about cyberbullying and working with that and coming up with some solutions on that. And if you can stick in your calendars, October 22nd, and we'll get that out to you in an email as well, at 6:30 over at Eureka High School Lecture Hall, we're going to have a workshop on cyberbullying that Laurie Alexander, our child welfare and attendance person is going to be heading up. We're working with Officer Jenkins and our grip coordinator as well. Getting parents out there and community members to really inform them about this latest trend of cyberbullying and try to get some information out there to educate the parents on how they can work with their children with cyberbullying. One other thing that I need to bring up is talk about our December meeting. We have a conflict with a board member with our December 14th meeting, I believe it is. Should have my calendar open in front of me, but it's December 12th, that's what it is. So the question is, we have, that comes to that December meeting with a due date of December 15th is our first interim report that Mr. Ziegler does. And so it really leaves us no flexibility in as far as having a meeting that week. We have to have the meeting the week of December 12th. The board member's going to be out of town that week. So the question is this, we have a December organizational meeting. Do we want to have two meetings that month, which would be one meeting on December 12th and another meeting on December 19th? December 12th would deal with the first interim report. The December 19th meeting, excuse me, would be all the other business that we normally do during the month. One of my goals this year has been to streamline as much as possible our board meetings. So I just need some direction. When I say streamline, try to minimize the number of special board meetings. So just need some direction from you on what you would like to do as a board as far as...
December 19th.
This board member out of town for the whole week?
Correct, out of town the whole week of December 12th.
It's me, and I'm going to be out of town that week. And I would really like to be at the organizational meeting, so that's why I asked if we could possibly do that on the 19th, if that works for everybody. If it doesn't, then I just will have to miss that one.
I'm available.
I'm available.
We will make it so. Then we will have, I'm looking for Mickey, there she is. We'll have a meeting on the 12th then, and pretty much the only agenda item will be Paul. And then we will have another meeting on the 19th, which is our regular business. And we'll deal with the organizational at that meeting. I think part of our protocols is the first meeting in December is the organizational meeting, but with this, we'll just follow this direction and do it as the December 19th meeting. So, very good.
So then December 12th, we wouldn't need a study session?
That is correct. We are going to come in, Mr. Ziegler is going to give us presentation, and we will leave.
So what time should we start the 12th then?
We are flexible. I think seven is probably the best because the budget as first interim is very important to many people, especially seeing as how the first interim will be following the November ballot initiative. So I'd encourage you to keep it at seven o'clock, just so we kind of keep in the norm of what we normally do.
And then the 19th would be our normal five o'clock study session?
That's, well, five-ish study session, depending on how much stuff we have on the agenda. Study session will probably start around five, but I would let you know five or five-thirty right around there, depending on how many items we have. My guess is it will be five because there's, not including the December 12th meeting, there's a, somewhere around a four-week break between the previous meeting. So there'll probably be several things that we have to discuss.
Would you repeat it? Or are you going to send us something on the cyberbullying?
Yes, we, I will send it out.
The time, the date, and the place?
Yep, I will send it out and I will give to you, so you have it right now. This.
Oh, thank you. And speaking of places, could I ask, twice now we've been invited to PBIS 101, but it doesn't say where it's going to be. It's going to be at one o'clock someplace.
Dr. Metz, is that?
I have to ask Laurie.
Right now the PBIS 101 is scheduled to be in the, at Windship. If we get not as many people, we might move it here at the PDC, but right now we have the larger round at Windship.
And the date and time?
Date and time.
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
And what, when?
Monday, the first.
October 1st?
Yes.
I have all this, but I didn't get a place. Thank you.
All right, and the last thing I have on my report is I wanted to provide you, you have a spreadsheet sitting in front of you. This is hot off the presses, just came in yesterday, I believe, from the County Office of Education. This is the enrollment of our districts around the area. And as you can see on there, Eureka City Schools is down, 157 students are about 4%. There's some school districts on there that are higher percentage-wise, but don't let those fool you too much because most of those are very small schools. So if you've only got four or five kids in your entire school and one or two kids leaves, obviously, you know, like for instance, Greenpoint went from 10 students to four students, so they had a 60% change. So, need to make sure that you look at numbers there. So, that's it, just thought you might find that of interest.
Are there any board member reports?
I'd like to invite myself to Eureka High School. I haven't finished it yet.
Me too.
Fran and I had talked together about coming over and spending two or three hours. And we'd like to announce it to the teachers, and we picked a date a week from today, I believe it's the 25th, Tuesday. And request that the staff is informed that we'll be there between 11 and 1:00. And hopefully you, Rick, could pick out a convenient place where we could have lunch and be available to staff.
For clarification, are you providing lunch for staff or lunch for you?
I don't care if they eat or don't eat, I don't need to eat.
Okay. So as a place where staff can come and eat their lunch?
Where we will be available to hear whatever they would like to tell us.
Okay, sounds good.
So on the 25th, tell me again the times?
11 to 1:00, if that sounds reasonable.
What time is your lunch period?
Starts at 12:30, and so, a little after that, and so you...
And ends when?
1:15, 1:10?
11:30 to 1:30.
11:30, 1:30.
Sounds good. That sounds good to me.
And I wanted to say tonight, so that any high school staff that might be here would also pass word along.
You can come to my class.
Thank you.
We're going to be in one spot, so you can come to us, but hopefully we'll get a chance to come to your classes too. You can invite us while we're there.
Any other board member reports?
I attended Eureka High's back-to-school night, and it was really, I thought it was really a great evening. I liked the Main Street idea with all the booths and stuff, it was really nice. And I had a really good time, and then when I went home, I cried a little bit because it was my last back-to-school night as a parent. And my son's a senior this year, so it was kind of a bittersweet evening, but it was really nice.
I just want to point out, you'll probably be to a few more.
Yeah, I know, as a parent.
I also got to attend the Zane and Eureka High School back-to-school nights. Wore my PTA hat for a while, thank you for the time. And I got to meet all of my son's teachers this year, which is pretty exciting, and I think that he's got a great year in store. He is now a sophomore, which is just amazing to me. He was just in second grade like two weeks ago. And I wanted to mention to the superintendent that there is a rumor going around school that one of the teachers was saying, was it yesterday or the day before, that you kids better be on your good behavior because the superintendent was in the school. And a number of students said the what? So you are now known as the Super Nintendo of the district. That is what they're calling you. The Super Nintendo of the district is on the school grounds.
They probably see that as much more valuable than the superintendent, I'm sure.
The Super Nintendo. I also attended the city-county meeting with Dr. Van Leek a week ago, and it was an informational, very informational. I just wanted to point out that Rex Bone, the newest council member, or the new, I'm sorry, the newest supervisor, mentioned that our school district has never looked better. The grounds and the buildings, the facilities are looking very well. And he said that members of the community had noticed, and he wanted to point that out in public twice, I believe. So, anyway, just thought I'd let you know.
Want to extend our gratitude to Dan and Charlie and their crews certainly for, because they're the ones with their feet on the grounds making that happen.
Yep.
That's fantastic.
Okay, so we'll move to public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time designated on the agenda when members of the public may bring before the board member matters that are not listed on the agenda. Legally, no action or significant discussion can take place about a matter not listed on the agenda. Therefore, board members and district staff members usually will not respond to public comments. The reason for this is the Brown Act. No significant discussion can take place on an issue that has not been properly noticed to the public. As printed on the agenda, individual speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Each topic is limited to 20 minutes total. You have a lighting system up on the podium, and when the light turns yellow, you have one minute left, and when it turns red, if you could please stop and let the speaker speak. And I don't have any green sheets here. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on non-agenda items? Hearing that, we'll move to the consent calendar.
I'd like to poll, I'd like to poll L-14. Clarification.
I, I move that we adopt the consent calendar minus L-14.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of passing the consent calendar, would the one exception signify by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. L-14.
Oh, question, it's deer season. We're talking about going into the Trinity Alps. Is the advisor taking precautions? What, I'm just a little nervous because I'm a hunter. I'd like to see all of them in camo, not in camouflage, but bright colors.
Well, I guess I should clarify, are you going to Boulder Lakes? Because if I was hiking and you were hunting, I'd be nervous too. I'm joking.
I deserve that.
I better be careful. This is a board meeting, you could vote three, nothing right now. No, but seriously speaking, we spoke to the advisor today via email, and he gave us a list of things to, because I think that's a very valid concern. And he gave us a list of things that he's doing to take precaution, among which are wearing bright colors, making sure that the students are talking in above-normal tones of voice, and then also making sure that nobody strays from the group at all unless they are with somebody. Because the number-one concern being, like you talked about, safety. He also expressed that he's been up there several times over the past several years during hunting season, and it doesn't seem to be too frequented by hunters because there is so much, it's such a popular place for non-hunters to go, that the hunters seem to migrate away from that area.
Move for approval of L-14.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
I'll just say that my daughter was very involved in the backpacking club when she was in high school, and enjoyed these trips a lot. And she went on this one a couple times, and I was, because my son's a hunter, and so I was really worried when she was going during hunting season. And she said they didn't even see anybody around, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, L-14 passes. Discussion action, items. M-20, Resolution 12-13-005, elimination reduction of classified employees. Playground Activity Supervisor and Special Education.
Gosh, okay. I'm bringing these two items to the board to request that they approve these eliminations. The Playground Activity Supervisor was to support a K-1 combination classroom that is no longer, that we had last year, that we do not have this year, so the work has gone away. And the Instructional Assistant Special Ed, the IEP team determined that that student no longer requires the additional support of a one-on-one aide.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 12-13-005 to eliminate a classified unit position in the Eureka City Schools district.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. M-21, Classified Management Salary Schedule Formative Update in Addition of Student Services Coordinator Position.
And again, the board is being asked to approve... The board is being asked to approve the Classified Management Salary Schedule. It basically has been a reformatting update, and the only addition to the current, or to the salary schedule that's being presented to the board is the addition of the Student Service Coordinator position.
For clarification, what was in the board packet is not the same as what you handed out to the board tonight, correct?
The difference between what was in the board packet and what I handed out today, it was, it was an addition, and we wanted to clarify that the salary schedule is a work day per day, because it was a little bit confusing. So we added the, that wording to the salary schedule. And then we also, just again for clarification purposes, just put the number of workdays each one of those positions have. So that was the only changes between what you were presented initially in the board packet and what you have before you today, tonight.
I have a concern that I'd like to share. It's about our chief business official. I don't know what... I have a very deep concern. But I think this young fellow that's done such an exceptional job should be an assistant superintendent and not a chief business official. And I don't know how to go about achieving that, because I want to retain him, and I don't want to lose him to someone else.
Well, that's certainly possible. The numbers that are there between a chief business official and assistant superintendent are very close, so, just so I understand what you're suggesting is just leaving the numbers the same, so not changing anything with numbers, but taking off the title Chief Business Official and replace it with Assistant Superintendent of Business Services would be, my understanding?
I would like to go in that direction.
So would I.
The one, the one thing that I would say that would be parallel with that would be that Mr. Ziegler's duties have changed since I've come on board, and specifically speaking, last year when he was a CBO or Chief Business Official, he was solely responsible for fiscal services. And coming from being a former CBO myself, or Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, I immediately came in and added a plethora of things to his duties, to include food services, also included transportation, included maintenance, and included technology. So four things on top of one thing that he had, and those are four pretty major things because each of those departments have a director. So I would think that it's definitely more accurate to call him the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services rather than the Chief Business Official.
So just as a clarification, you're talking about a change in title only, not a change in compensation?
Well, being a former CBO, I would always propose a change in title without a change in compensation.
But the action we're asking tonight is just the approval of the salary schedule. That would have to come back to the board under personnel.
Right, but what we could do is approve the salary schedule without Chief Business Official there and replace it.
With that particular title, but the actual formalizing of that change would need to come back to the board.
I didn't mean to throw a wrench into the gearbox, but I think we should recognize what's going on and what Mr. Ziegler is actually doing.
Yes.
So I guess what we needed, I'm sorry, did you have something else to say?
Well, I just had a question about the new salary schedule that's on. The, with the new salary schedule that's here, that's for the new position that, that we are transitioning to. Right. And so what is, is that salary comparable to what those people that are in positions making now, or is this, would this be an increase if somebody were to take this position from, from what they were doing before?
And what I said, what it reflects is, I would say, a slight bump up in the change to a salary position, but it's pretty minor. It really was taken into consideration that there would be no harm to anyone with this proposed salary schedule. And because of having to round up or do some configurations, it was, it actually could be a bump up, a smaller.
So, so a direction that I would need, if you're going to ask for some, for a motion, is the motion to include, if that's the direction you want to go, this salary schedule striking out Chief Business Official and replacing it with Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. And then at the next board meeting on October 3rd, we would come back to you with the rest of the information to make that complete.
I so move.
I second.
I'm kind of confused if you can change the title at this meeting with this agenda item.
Well, to me, it's a, it is basically a reformatting and just adding a different title. Historically, we have done that fairly easily with, because it's not a change in compensation, it's just a change in...
And it would be properly agendized because we're just specifically talking about the salary schedule right now, not talking about the position right now. We'll bring that back and have, it'll be part of an open session and actual changing of the position as well.
So there's been a motion and a second, and do I hear any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item M-22, MOU between Eureka City Schools Agreement with City of Eureka for After-School Programs.
Members of the board, we're in a partnership with the City of Eureka for the after-school program, and this item before you tonight asks you to approve the memorandum of understanding between City of Eureka and Eureka City Schools.
Question for you. The cost is $204,000, and it's part of, or required because or part of the ACES grant. What, how much does the ACES grant bring in compared to this expense?
We have received $600,000 per year for, from the state for the ACES grant, and the $202,000 pays for a variety of recreation leaders and support staff and, and training.
So it's about a third of the total grant.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract between Eureka City Schools and the City of Eureka Recreation Division for staffing of all after-school programs at Alice Burney, Grant, Lafayette, and Washington Elementary Sites and Zane Middle School.
Second?
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item M-23, Award of Bid 2012 Re-roofing Work Gymnasium Locker Room Improvement, Windship School.
Before I start, thank you for the potential action under M-21. Very, very honored by that. M-23, the Award of the, the bid for the re-roofing work at the gymnasium for Windship. We received a number of bids, and the low bidder for the project turned out to be Pacific Builders, and their bid came in at $64,988.
Are we required to accept the lowest bidder?
I believe that we are unless there, there was a really good reason that we would not want to.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Have we worked with Pacific Builders before?
To my knowledge, we have not.
They did some work on the snack bar at Washington. They were the primary contractor on that, but that was before my time here.
Other than the snack bar at Washington, no, they haven't done anything for us.
Move for approval of M-23?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. M-24, Certification of Un-audited Actual Financial Report 2011-12.
Okay, so a report on the 2011-12 unaudited actuals, wrapping up our 11-12 fiscal year. The action that we'll request tonight is for the governing, governing board to discuss and approve our 2011-12 unaudited actuals as presented, and the approval of the unaudited actuals is in fact an annual requirement. A slide that you've seen in past presentations, but just kind of taking you through very quickly, there we are in kind of the upper-left quadrant. It says by September 15th that the board needs to take action on the unaudited actuals. Some of that really is at the discretion of the county office, and... Some of that really is at the discretion of the county office and for lots of different reasons, not least of which is they're trying to about, put about 34 districts through the process right now. They've given us and others till the end of the month to present and, and have this approved. So if you see a little bit discrepancy in the date, that's what's behind that.
Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association. Fighting for quality education in the greater Eureka area. Find out more at ETA-CTA.org.
Tonight I'd like to take you through the, the five different areas. And really what, what I would like to focus on is to talk about the changes that we've seen since third interim, which was April 30th of 2012 through the end of the year. So do some comparisons there. Take a look at the general fund overall, breaking it down between unrestricted and restricted. A look at our ending fund balances as we wrapped up the year. And then last of all, take a little bit, a look, a look at our cash position. Really hard numbers to see here, I know. And this is a little bit different than what's in your board packet. I took out the interims, other than the third interim. So really, we've got this, the three columns that we're showing here are the 2010-11 unaudited actuals, the third interim report, which is the, the last official report you received for 11-12. And then last but not least, the 11-12 unaudited actuals. This lumps together both the restricted and the unrestricted revenues and expenditures for the general fund. So I won't spend a whole lot of time on this one, but we'll move fairly quickly to break down the differences between the unrestricted portions of our general fund and the restricted portions of our general fund. One of the reasons I did want to show this, a couple of reasons. And I'll point out that the top line on here, which is the revenue limit sources. And if you look out to the far right-hand column, you'll see a difference between third interim and unaudited actuals of just under $5,000. And that says for the most part that we spiked that number right on the button. Interestingly enough though, when we pull that number apart between restricted and unrestricted, you're going to see variances that go in opposite directions that when combined bring this back to a negligible difference. We'll see that in a couple of different areas. And that's why to take a look at the general fund on a combined basis is a little bit of a misleading picture and that why, why we therefore want to take you through and pull it apart between restricted and unrestricted. That being said, I'll take you down to the bottom of the, the right-hand column, which is the ending fund balance. And the difference between our third interim ending fund balance for our general fund and where we ended up for our, our unaudited actuals, we actually increased that ending fund balance by about $850,000. It'll turn out to be fairly, fairly evenly split between restricted and unrestricted. But that is the overall impact and increase for our ending fund balance.
Two questions?
Yes.
On that, okay, with the ending fund balance, we're seeing it decrease by a million? From the unaudited last year to the unaudited this year?
Correct.
So a lot of the talk about we have so much in our ending fund balance, we're seeing that erode with our deficit spending.
Correct.
And the difference between the third interim and the unaudited actuals in the B, the expense, all of those expenses were higher?
No, so actually in, in the general fund, or excuse me, the unaudited actuals, our expenditures were lower than what we had at third interim.
Okay, so they're better than the projection?
That's correct. And conversely, if you look at the revenues, our revenue actually came in lower than we had anticipated as well. So we had lower revenues than we had projected at third interim. We had lower expenses than we projected at third interim. And the net effect of that is about an $850,000 to the positive, increasing our ending fund balance.
That helps, thank you.
So it doesn't look like I did anything, but that, it really is the unrestricted chart that's up there now. And I'm just going to leave that there for a second. What I'd like to do is, is go through and give a little bit of an explanation behind the, what I'll call the variances. Again, the difference between where we were at third interim and where we ended up at the, at the end of the year with our unaudited actual wrap-up. And I won't go line by line necessarily, but I'll take you through some of the, the larger variances and give you some of the background as to why that occurred. So I'll also point out ending fund balance for unrestricted increased by about $450,000. And we'll come back around to that number fairly quickly. So for the general fund unrestricted, third interim to unaudited actuals, our revenue limit transfers, we were under what we had projected with the, with the third interim by about $199,000. And really what that means is that we moved less money to special education, moved less money to that restricted revenue than we had expected to see. Reason for that is that we spent less money in special education, lower encroachment, therefore less of a revenue limit transfer that had to go to, to a restricted, a restricted resource, special education. We'll see when we get to, again, when we get to the restricted side, we're going to see that number go in the opposite direction. The two will essentially cancel out. But it was a shift of funds, if you will, between restricted and unrestricted that caused that. Other local revenues, the, we had additional redevelopment, redevelopment revenue that we had not budgeted for and did not anticipate of about $77,000 that came in the last couple of months. We reclassified some lease revenue from restricted to unrestricted, thereby increasing the unrestricted revenue for that lease to the tune of about $38,000. And another Microsoft revenue, which we did not anticipate, had not budgeted for, an additional $40,000 came in, in June. Certificated salaries, we had the education jobs fund that we had, that's one of the era funds that we had posted some of the unrestricted dollars to. At the, as we were doing our closeout, we realized that that needed to be reassigned and moved that over to a restricted resource, thereby reducing what had been charged to the unrestricted resource. Substitute seat, substitute teacher sick leave was over budgeted, excuse me, under budgeted by about $36,000. So we spent more than, there than we had expected to. And substitute teachers were over third interim by about $23,000. So all told, that helps explain what happened in terms of seeing an increase in unrestricted teacher salaries, certificated salaries. Books and supplies were down about $46,000. Just the budget was underspent there. That's not an overly large number, but it is one of the components that caused a variance there. Services and other operating expenses, things like natural gas and electricity, that was actually, we spent more than we had anticipated there. That was offset by everything else that you see on the rest of the list. Equipment rentals were down, telephone was down, telephone lines were down. And a large part of that is moving the, we'd made a switch from our phone system to the ShoreTel system, utilizing internet as opposed to AT&amp;T, so we were able to recoup some dollars there. Net effect of that was almost $100,000 to the good in our favor, so that was a nice move on our part. Postage was also down during that period of time by about $14,000. Our indirect costs were down. So this is a process whereby we charge some of the restricted programs and bring money back to the unrestricted general fund. With our overall costs in the restricted side being down, there was less of the indirect cost factor that we were able to apply. And that brought us to a reduced cost, our indirect cost down by about $64,000. Last but not least, we're coming pretty close, our contributions to restricted programs. So taking money from unrestricted general fund and moving it to some of the restricted programs like special education and transportation that are restricted. We had less of an encroachment, less of a need to move monies to those restricted programs. And therefore our contributions were down by about $206,000. You'll see the offset to that as well when we get to the, to the restricted side. And last but not least here, finally, the unrestricted ending balance did indeed decrease by about $459,000 from the third interim.
But important to note, it decreased by almost a million dollars over the ending fund balance last year.
That's correct, yes.
Before you go on, Paul, I want to back up on the one, certificated salaries. And it talks about substitute teacher sick leave and then substitute teacher other. Did we have a lot more illness than projected? What, what would cause this?
It's a good question. It's really difficult to, to forecast how much sick leave, how much additional pay is going to happen there. And I, as I recall, at third interim, we actually were showing that we were underspent at that time. And this so happened that we had additional costs that came in and pushed that up, up and over during that period of time. So our projection is really based on prior year and trying to model that off of prior year.
And, and these differences, this is between third interim and the unaudited?
That's correct, that's correct. So for instance, with salaries, as we're going throughout the course of the year and we may budget a, you know, a particular position and it doesn't get filled for the first, during first interim. So we'll reduce the budget for that. It may not get filled all the way to second interim, we'll reduce the budget for that portion as well. We tend to not do that with things like sick pay, other pay, where we really can't forecast and tie it directly to a position. So we don't make the same adjustments to budget along the way for those categories as we, as we would for a position. Similar sheet showing some of the differences for the restricted. And I'll again take you through explanations of what you see there on the shaded portion, the column off to the right. Again, pointing you down to the ending fund balance for restricted shows about a $400,000, excuse me, yes, about a $400,000 difference from third interim. A slight change from where we were last year at this time with ending, that ending fund balance down by about a little less than $100,000 year over year. So again, the revenue limit transfer to special education didn't need to move as much there. That $199,000 offsets what happened in the unrestricted side of things. I'll point out that the reduction in special education costs does include a reduction of $94,000 in the chargeback amount that we'd expected to see from the county office for the services that they provide. So they give us a budget throughout the course of the year or an estimate. They get to the end of the year and they kind of true everything up and then they really do put out the final numbers. Our number turned out to be less than what we had anticipated from them. So that was somewhat of a pleasant surprise to us.
Is this, is this a pattern or is this a one-time event? Is this something that has been happening over the years or, and I'm thinking of special ed encroachment basically?
Well, the, so the, the chargeback from the county office really reflects their own costs of their programs. They pass that on to us as a chargeback and that number is somewhere in the, the million four, million five range in terms of what, what they, they charge to us. Whether that number has gone up or down relative to the projection over the year, specifically from the county office's chargeback, I can't tell you. My guess would be that it probably goes up more often than it goes down.
We actually had a meeting today with Mindy, help me out, what's Mindy's last name?
Fattin.
I'm sorry?
Fattin.
Fattin?
D-G-I-G.
Okay, she is the director of the County Selpa, which covers Humboldt and Delmore Counties. And we actually had a conversation specifically about special education, that's what the Selpa does. And then a specific conversation about the increasing special education costs. In this district, we're very concerned about the increasing special education costs. And, and what was really interesting was the percentage countywide, when you pull out the small districts, because they'll throw the percentages off, is somewhere around 18% was what my recollection was today, countywide. And Eureka City Schools sits about 14% as far as the special education population of the general population.
Eighteen with all districts, including Delmore. And it was sixteen pulling out the smaller districts. And we were, I don't know why it's not somehow, we were a little over 13.
Right. So with that being said, we're, that's good news that we're under the county average. But unfortunately, that county average is just way out of proportion with the rest of the state. So I'm very interested in digging into that a little bit and getting a better understanding of why our numbers are so high. Very interested in looking at our identification process, looking at our one-on-one aides. And the reason I pick out those specific things are because those are the things that stick out as extreme costs. Our staff may be doing a fantastic job of identifying and we may be right on, I don't know. That's just something that we want to look at because as our special education costs increase, it has this little effect called MOE or Maintenance of Effort. And so if our costs increase the following year, we have to maintain that same level of effort. So we can't just go in and cut the special education programs and reduce the cost because it's part of the federal guidelines that you have to maintain. And there's a complex, there's three different tests you can do, it's a very complex calculation. But we do have to stick with that. So it's, it's very concerning to me and we're going to be looking deep into that cost to the district.
And I'll just share a little bit more detail in, in terms of special ed, now seems like a good time to do it. We spent just under $5 million in 11-12 on special education. About 460, 4.6 million, somewhere in that range. The, the contribution that we made from our unrestricted resources, our encroachment, if you will, about 2.4 million with another half a million or so that comes out of our revenue limit. So almost $3 million in, in revenue that we're putting above and beyond the state and federal resources that, that are helping pay for federal, or for special education. So clearly a significant number for us. Okay, federal revenues, as, as you look at the overall analysis, as you see federal revenues come down, you would expect to see the restricted revenues, excuse me, the strict, restricted expenses come down as well. So the revenue and expense will move a little bit in lockstep. And the big reason for that is for the majority of the federal programs, we're reimbursed through the federal cash management reporting system. So we, any, any particular federal program, we say we have, we've spent this much or we have this much cash left and then we get reimbursed. So if we don't spend the money, we don't see the revenue come back in. It's a little bit of an offset there. So if we had expected to spend more as we had budgeted and didn't, both our expenditures and our revenues will drop correspondingly. So that's certainly the case with the Title I. We spent about $200,000 less than what our allocation was for 2011-12. That'll be carried over into 2012-13, thank gosh, because we already know that for 2012-13, the projection that we had in place, we were basically guided to budget revenue flat for our federal revenues. We took about $157,000 hit already in our Title I revenues for 2012-13. So the sites did a good job of, of hanging on to some of those monies, understanding that it might be a tougher year up ahead. So that $200,000 or so of Title I will help offset some of the funding cut that we'll see for 2012-13. Next line is the Program Improvement Grant, also some of our categorical funds. That was a grant that we received in 2011-12 to be spent over a two-year period. We will spend it fully in 2012-13. And as I recall, we did not spend any of it in 2011-12. So there's another reason that we would have, we would have booked $150,000 in anticipated revenue for 2011-12. It didn't happen, meaning that our revenues for 11-12 in that particular line went down. We'll see a corresponding increase to our 2012-13 budget when we carry those dollars over. And that will happen with other federal, federal programs. We had similar situation with our Workforce Investment Act funds carrying over $245,000 from last year into this year. We got a late start with the program for one and then with the, the staffing turnover that we had there, that grant was not spent as fully as we had anticipated seeing it in 2011-12. Other state revenues, we had an increase in state lottery funds. I understand that there was some real excitement over some larger payouts that are out there. That indeed did carry through to the point where we received some additional lottery funds there as well as not fully spending the 11-12. So between the additional funding and the carryover, we see a decrease, excuse me, an increase in our state lottery funds for 2011-12. Certificated salaries, this was under our projection at third interim by about $126,000. Sixty-two of that attributed to special education. Again, we see substitute teacher costs, that was under our expectation at third interim by about $76,000. Classified salaries, our instructional aides for special ed were down about $30,000 from projection. And the WEA culinary program did not get off the ground as early as we had expected. expected, and therefore, the classified salaries attributed to that program were down, were under by about $35,000. Books and supplies, again, we talked about the federal revenue decrease being offset by the decrease to expenditures. Here's one place where that happens, in our books and supplies area. Materials and supplies overall were down by about $245,000. Different areas of categoricals, Title I, EIA, Economic Impact, and site trust funds were the major components, or major areas where we underspent based on what we had expected. Our equipment purchases, purchases were also down by about $20,000 relative to our third interim projection. Services and other operating expenses, traveling conferences, we kept the, that number down. That was one of the things we'd identified as part of our fiscal stability plan, and moved early on that to try to keep that amount lower than had been projected. Our equipment rentals and leases were down. And the other really interesting thing for us is other operating expenses. It's a, it's a, I'll give you some jargon, it's our 5888, and I'll call it a holding account. So as we're putting together, whether it be administrative or site budgets, and almost always with categoricals, if we don't know exactly where that money's going to be assigned, we put it in other operating expense. We don't think that it will be spent out of that line item. We fully expect, fully expect that it will be reallocated to a different part of, of the expense statement, whether it be salaries, supplies, whatever the case may be. So we see that number high at the start of the year, it continues to come down towards the end of the year. When we get to year end, we completely clear that number out, and it either comes into the following year in the form of carryover, or is reallocated to a different expense line. So that is always going to be a little bit of a, an issue for us in terms of trying to get apples to apples comparison with our, our services and other operating expenses. Here's the, the offset that we saw up with the revenue limit, $94,000 in the charge back, less than what we had expected for special, special education. Our indirect costs are down $64,000. That, that number may ring a bell to you, but as we're, as we are generating revenue, if you will, from the restricted programs, taking it away, we're adding it on the other side, those two blend together and cancel each other out, as do contributions. So contributions were less than we had expected, and that takes us to our ending fund balance of roughly $399,000, an increase from third interim. I'll take you quickly through the ending fund balances, and this is kind of an interesting one to, to track over time, and not just for this particular cycle. But on the far-left-hand column is the 2010-11 unaudited actuals, and our net general fund, ending fund balance at that point was about 9.6 million. If you bring it all the way down to 1112 unaudited actuals, we're at about 8.6 million. So again, we saw about a million-dollar decline there. But what's interesting is to see what normally would happen in every year, and I'll call it kind of stringing lights, in which you'll start here, your first interim, or excuse me, at budget adoption, you'll, you'll generally show a number, and you'll kind of do a little dip like this, and then it would come back up at the end of the year and complete that cycle. And the reason for that, and if I may use the, the Starbucks analogy, if, if I'm going to go to, I, I put $5 away to, to go to Starbucks every day of the month, so there's $150, whatever the case may be. And three days in, I decide to do something else, so now I have five bucks in my pocket that I didn't spend. I do that a few more times. So instead of that $150 that I expected to spend over the course of the month, I maybe have spent $120. That lesser expenditure to us translates to an increase in our ending fund balance. I haven't done it for us yet, I've seen it for other districts, but I suspect that if we did, if we charted this course year after year after year, we'd see that very same, that very same pattern occur. And I know that it happened in 1011, it's happened in 1112, I would expect the same thing in 1213.
The change in 1112 is pretty dramatic between budget adoption and, and third interim and the unaudited. You said you're, you expect to see that again this year, that dramatic?
Right, because, and let me go back to, to what I said about salaries. We have a, a single position that we expect to fund at the start of the year, and for whatever reason, we don't. So we're saving money, or, or not spending money, if you will, for that period of time. So we'll continue to adjust the budget.
I got that.
Okay.
In 1112, the adjustment between budget adoption and audited is $1.7 million.
Right.
Could it be that big this year, again this year?
I wouldn't expect it to be that large, John. I think part of that is where we were with budget adoption and expectations of, of the cuts at that time. So we didn't see the cuts actually happen the way that they were intended for 2011-12. So that contributes to a much larger ending fund balance in 1112 than we would have anticipated at budget adoption at the start of the year. So the same analogy, this year, we have budgeted for the trigger reductions. If that doesn't happen, we'll see a, a much sharper increase from budget adoption to unaudited, unaudited actuals than we would under normal circumstances, or put differently. If the, if the election, it doesn't go favorably for us, we would not expect to see as much of a, a peak that way. A few other to point out in here, Adult Education actually, with some of their restricted programs, brought in some additional fees that allowed them to increase their ending fund balance higher than we would have expected. Cafeteria did a good job of controlling their costs. We tried to keep them at about $300,000 for cash flow purposes, to keep a positive amount in that fund. They snuck another $55,000 by us, so that one, that came up just a little bit. Let's see, our secondary bond is not fully spent at the end of the year. We have about $89,000 left to spend on that. It may be gone as we speak, but that's where the balance was at the end of the year. Capital facilities, that money goes in right at the end of the year to help pay for the, the certificate of participation, which by the way is now paid off, so that ending fund balance goes away fairly quickly. Our capital outlay fund stays at right around 1.9 million, the money that's been set aside for the Lincoln and/or Alice Burney remodel. So all told, from where we were at third interim to where we ended up, unaudited actuals, our ending fund, our ending fund balance across all funds is up about 1.2 million. Okay, I'm going to take us to cash very quickly then. Our cash balance at third interim was about 2.4 million. Our cash balance for unaudited actuals raises to about 3 million, and that's good, because we actually burned through about $3 million in cash in 1112. Put differently, if we spend at the same pace in 1213 as we did in 1112, all other factors being equal, when we come to the end of 1213, we will be right around a zero cash balance. So that's something that we're going to have to be addressing as we go throughout the course of the year. We're doing monthly cash statements right now, just to make it sure that we're staying on top of it. November, obviously, will have a big, big impact on what happens for us. We've talked about cash deferral before. We still remain at over a $6 million cash deferral as we wrap up 1112. So $6 million that is not in our pockets right now. Looking forward, and, and the big thing, of course, is the November election and how that turns out for us. Just received updated numbers from the county office. I've been saying that we were somewhere between 1.5 and 1.6 million in terms of what the impact would be if the ballot is unsuccessful. The most recent projection shows us at an over $1.6 million impact if the initiative, initiative does not go through. Cash deferrals, another issue for us as we just spoken of, and I'm going to point down to the bottom line, our ongoing facility maintenance and capital projects, lots of work that needs to be done there, ongoing. So with that, I'll wrap it up.
So one thing, real quick before we go on, one glimmer of hope is that we have some, finally, some positive cash flow compared to the budget, or at the state, and so that was for the month of August, I believe. So that's a nice little silver lining that we had, and it was enough to, I believe, catch us up to the budgeted amount with the state, which is, we can use all we can get at the state right now, so.
That was the good news. Do you want the bad news? The expenditures were far outstripping budget, so on the whole.
I was trying to stay positive.
I know you were, I just had to give the other side, so anyway, okay. Anyway, that, that'll wrap up the report, so any questions?
I have a question about the cash deferrals. Right now, they're at 6 million.
Right.
And you had said it earlier, meaning that if the Proposition 30 does pass, that there's a possibility that those deferrals will be paid down.
Correct.
Statewide level, but how much could that affect Eureka? Are we talking from six to five, or six to four?
John, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you on that one. I can bring that one back, though. Yeah.
Underwriting support for this program is provided by the Eureka Teachers Association. Fighting for quality education in the greater Eureka area. Find out more at ETA-CTA.org.
That's a good example of, you've probably heard the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association ad that's on the radio. They talk about Prop 30 passing, and one of the things they said on that ad is, even CSBA, or California School Boards Association, admits that Prop 30 passing would be no new money to education. Well, that's kind of true, and the reason I say that that's kind of true, because this is a good example of how Proposition 30 passing would actually pay down the deferrals and help the cash flow issues out with the local schools. So that's one of the things that Prop 30 would do, and the other thing that it doesn't address is the cut to the revenue limit, that if Prop 30 doesn't pass, it would just allow us to maintain status quo.
Jarvis ad is very misleading.
Yes, it is. I move that the governing board approve the 2011-12 unaudited actuals as presented.
Did you have, were you finished?
I'll second.
That was perfect unison.
Better figured.
He just had his mouth open, wasn't going to say anything. Well, that's up there.
Do you have your second, maybe? There's been a motion and a second to approve the unaudited actuals. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Man opposed, and they are accepted.
M25, Resolution 12-13-004, adopt GAN, GAN limit for 2012-13.
I would go deep into GAN limit if I could, but let me just give you the quick overview. Really what this does is it sets a limit for the appropriations that we can receive for state and local revenues, and it kind of sets a, a bar out there. For 2011-12, the, the limit that we were operating and trying to stay under was not a problem for us, was about 24 million. Our actual, what we actually received there was just about 21.3 million, so we had a, a nice comfortable cushion there. The, the limit for 2012-13 is about 24.5 million. Again, it excludes federal appropriations, it's just state and local, and this is the way that, that the state can keep an eye out so that they in turn can stay under their mandated limit of expenditures. This was originally intended to put a cap on spending, or to try, to tie it to inflation, and make sure that people weren't spending well beyond that point, that, that the way things have worked out, though, the actuals tend to come in well under the limit, and it's a non-issue for us and for most districts. If it turned out that we were bumping up against that appropriations level, the, the GAN limit by board action, we could increase the limit, so there we are.
Move for approval?
Motion and a second, my friend. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, man opposed, motion carries. Report on summer maintenance projects.
I'll just keep going. So as I start on this, I'd like to ask Charlie Battini to come up and be near in case we have some additional questions and additional detail that you might want on some of these projects. And as Charlie's making his way up, I, I know that, was it nice words that Rex Bone had, had given about some of the way that things are shaping up throughout the district, and I just want to publicly thank Charlie and his crew for all the work that they put in over the summer, Dan Piers and his crew as well, in terms of some of the grounds and, and other things that went on. But from my perspective, things are looking better out there as well, and every day, hopefully, we're heading in the right direction, so thank you, Charlie, good job. With that, I get to, to talk about all the great things that happened over the summer. Again, if you have any questions, would like additional detail, I'll slow down, and I'll quickly defer to the, the gentleman on, on my left and behind me, but here we go. So at Alice Burney, this, this report was based on what came to you prior to, to summer, and, and as we listed some of the, the major projects that we had in front of us, and just want to give you a bit of an update. So for, at Alice Burney, and if you look in the background, you'll see the beloved, I guess that's the right word, portable that is no longer there, so that portable has in fact been removed. Figa's Construction did the work, and it's just gone. It's a good thing. A future project is to do the playground striping, we'll get to that as soon as we can. We did some loose vinyl flooring repair in Room 9 there, that was done in-house, that's completed as well. We have the clean and repair of the exit panic, the hardware there, the cafeteria, that is currently in progress. At Grant, a long list of things that, that occurred there, from taking care of gutters, putting the divider wall in, installing smart boards, there was a roof replacement for one of the portables. All the projects that we'd expected to take care of over the summer at Grant have been Lafayette, almost everything was done that we had expected. Again, we had some roof repair that occurred there, we've replaced siding on some walls, seal paint and stucco the cafeteria exterior walls, the fire alarm pull station was, was upgraded, maintained. So we still have some work to do on the siding on, I guess, three of the buildings that are still there to be done.
What was the hang-up, Charlie, on getting those done?
We got backlog, Hank. Some of the projects took a little bit longer, one of them being the tennis courts in-house. We did the gutter system, instead of contracting that out. Also, we had some problems with our weather this year in the breezeway deck on the second floor of the high school, so again, that backed us up on there, so.
Thank you much.
I'm amazed at what we can get done over the course of a summer, it's great to see. At Washington, four out of our five projects were taken care of there. The one that still remains to be done is installing the projector mounts in some of the classrooms, but as I understand, that's ongoing right now. At Zane, all three of the projects that we had expected to complete were completed, including the tune-up of the bleachers there, and that was done by an outside agency, is that correct, Charlie? Yeah, so. At Eureka High School on this list, took a, a great deal of work here. I'll just point to the things that are there. We still are working on the exit doors at the Ag complex, we still need to replace the, the valves in the Science Building heating system. Those are not yet scheduled, but, or at least on the list, and we'll get to as quickly as we can. Major, major issue, and I think that everybody is aware of this, and, and I think it's really a, a great point for us to be able to point out to the public, and that's the, the upgrade of the tennis courts. If you haven't had a chance to go out there and see them, please do, they did a really fine job all the way through. Had some help with the paving from Parker and Son and, and other folks that, that chipped in, but a lot of that was done in-house, including the new drainage system, which hopefully will keep them in, in good repair as we go forward, and I couldn't resist a before and after, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, it really does look really nice out there, and I, I think it's a great place to be able to bring the community to show some of the good things that are happening here in the district. Other things that have happened, or probably more to the point, the, the biggest thing that I think we're working on right now is the boys locker room upgraded, we're making progress there. there. I haven't been in to see it for a little bit, but I see lots of activity going on. In addition, the...
Do we have an idea on when that will be finished?
Shooting for sometime early November.
End of October, early November. We have some lead time with some lockers that we're ordering, maintenance-wise in-house. We still have the restroom to address, but the walls are pre-montained in the locker room, so we are etching the tile in the shower areas and getting those holes patched, and then we'll be with epoxy paint so that it'll, again aesthetically, look much better than whatever else.
Well, I want to see it when it's done, that's one thing I want to see.
I do.
Oh, we'll make sure we do a tour.
You get plenty of...
Yes, we'll make sure there's no students in there as well.
Exactly.
The one point that I wanted to bring up, Charlie, can you clarify for us, or Paul, either one of you, I understand you uncovered quite a little potential future project inside the showers over there at the locker room. Can you expand on that for us a little bit, please?
When there was some repairs made to our gymnasium several years ago, one side of the showers were abandoned, as were in the girls locker room. When my predecessor Bruce was involved, the domestic water system was looked at as a potential minefield, if you will. We had engineers look at that, and we brought some photos in, and they're weaving around all the joints now, so wherever they threaded this galvanized pipe, we're getting some fatigue in the pipes. It's one of those issues that could go tomorrow, or it could last another five to 10 years, but it is out there, and it's not going to heal itself. Estimated cost from the engineers were $600,000 on the initial project.
A little clarification, is that the side where the showers that we're still using or the abandoned side, I missed that?
That was on the abandoned side right now, but it's the entire, it's the entire water system, it starts from the meter, it's galvanized and runs completely through the building.
Okay, thank you.
Worth my projection is 10 years, as opposed to tomorrow, but we'll see. A few projects still to be completed that we will have to put off for now, the roof on the baseball dugouts, the sound panels to be installed in the main gym, and the heater in the wrestling room, on the list, but not scheduled at this point. At Winship, we got a couple of the three taken care of, we, I think that was on the consent agenda that we, excuse me, that was the bid that we just accepted tonight, so we'll be starting work on the roof at the lower gym there at Winship. And Charlie, expectation for finishing that up, any idea?
They'll get the notice receipt once, since we have the board approval, and then they'll get their bonding and insurance certificates, and we're looking at a 90-day project. We'll go ahead and do the roofing process before the rains hit, but the HVAC systems, which are on that smaller roof, will be sealed up and installed later if there is lead time issues.
We had a bit of a pleasant surprise in terms of the bid itself. We do have a concern, though, what happens once they tear the roof off, and what we might find under there. So $65,000 going in sounds good, but we don't yet know what the final bill will turn out to be.
Paul, what does tune-up bleachers mean?
What they did, we have an annual contract with American Eagle Bleachers, and they go out and they clean the bleacher system, service the motors, and tighten anything that's whose, that's their specialty, they install the new gym.
At the gym?
Yeah, so.
Okay, and then at the district office, more bleachers that got tuned up, thank gosh. We were still working on the exterior windows for the glaze and the prep and the painting there, that's in progress, and will be taken care of as soon as it can get done.
Where's the location of those bleachers?
I think somebody was feeling a little under the weather when she typed that.
I think so, too.
Hey, wait a minute, yeah.
The prime system was at Winship, or Winsler, the key system was installed on the district office, so.
I missed that one. Anyway, we've done the access ramps and taken care of the parking lots and the playgrounds across all the sites, and that would wrap up the major items that we took care of over the summer. I'm using the royal "we," of course, when I say that. But here's the other thing that I want to point out, in addition to the major projects that were taken on across the various sites, we completed a total of 300 additional work orders. So between the major projects and some of the smaller items that are taken care of on a day-to-day basis, let's just say that Charlie and his crew are keeping quite busy. So that concludes the report.
Okay, so there's no need for second closed session?
Enjoy your guys' circle jerk.
So were you told you couldn't let your children play?
Yeah, gave me a ticket to boot, I don't know what, I've...